To get this thing started, we're running a little bit late. I apologize for that. At this time, if you'll please rise, I will give a pledge of allegiance and the invocation be led by Mr. Jim Trippit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today. Lord, we thank you for each and every one of our blessings that you've given us. God, we thank you for our community which you've given us. Lord, we are a blessed community and group of people. Father, we thank you for the privilege of coming together, Lord, and we ask you to be with our mayor and city council. Father, we ask you to bless them and give them wisdom as they debate the city's business, Lord. Father, we pray that everything that's done and said will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight, Father. Lord, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
This time we'll go into item number three, no, item number four, citizens' comment. Does anybody have anything to bring before this body?
Mayor and council members, my name is Michael Stone. I live at 342 Lakeview Way and also own a business, 551 Noonan Street. The reason I'm here today is to say thank you to the city for, once again, supporting the art takeover that we had two weeks ago. The staff of Main Street, Ondie Leslie, and the staff at the Carrollton Arts Center with Tim Chapman did a fantastic job of helping us organize this event again. I don't know how many of you attended this event, but it was a collaboration between the Main Street merchants, the Cultural Arts Center, the University of West Georgia School of the Arts, and the Carrollton Tourist and Convention with Jonathan. Everybody pitched in this year. We thank you for allowing your two departments to include line item budgets to help us with that. Ondie did a fabulous job by securing a grant to help us with funding on it. And even though we had inclement weather, we had over 1,000 visitors on the square that Thursday. We had people on the square with clickers counting the crowd. We had over 110 people who registered for the door prizes. We had three gift baskets that were put together by the merchants, and we had over 110 people who registered for those. You may have seen or heard about, we had a trolley that took people from the depot down to the Quilt Museum and the AMP, down toward Little Hawaiian, back over to the Arts Center, and made that trip back again. The trolley was a huge hit with people. We had a musician playing the whole time on the trolley. We had musicians around the square. We had 40 venues that participated this year. If you recall, the first year, whenever I came and reported to you, we had 19. Last year, we had 29. This year, we had 40. The merchants talk about how people come into their businesses, people that have never been in their businesses before. This is the reason we've done this, is to build this partnership with the merchants of the Main Street Association, but also to encourage more people to enjoy the arts because Carrollton has a very rich art community here. And art takeover is a celebration of the arts. So my purpose of being here tonight is to say thank you, appreciate your support, and ask that you continue to support the arts in Carrollton. And please give a big thanks to Tim and Ondie and Jonathan and Erica for all the support that was given to us because it's a big deal now. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one raising their hand, we'll go to item number five, minutes. Before we get into the minutes section, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes from March 5, 2018, on item number two, Resolution 06218. I voted wrong on that motion. My intent was to recuse myself from the vote due to the fact that family has property up and down Bankhead and not abstaining. But I need to get a vote from you two guys whether to amend that or not. Have a second. All in favor of straightening me out? Thank you very much. Hey, we're all human, so I got ahead of myself last time. All right, now can we get a motion to accept the minutes as restated? Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mayor and council announcements.
I just want to jump in. Michael Stone, I just want to say thank you to you for coming, you and Andrea, both coming to the city with your wonderful idea of the art takeover. It is a true example of a public-private partnership, a collaboration between not just the city and one group, but multiple merchants and the artists within our community. It is an example that I would like to see continue to be followed. It was a wonderful event. It got people into the businesses, exposed to artists that are in our community, and I just want to personally thank you and Andrea for bringing that to the table and continuing to make it grow. And to our city staff that also helped, I'd like to voice my gratitude for that. It was a wonderful event. I wasn't able to make it. I wasn't feeling very well, but from everything that I heard, it was the first one I haven't made too. And just rave reviews all around from the merchants, from the artists, from the patrons, and the trolley addition was just a cool extra to see. So again, thank you so much.
Moving on, this might be a quick meeting tonight, guys. Item number eight, approval of agenda items for consideration.
I'd like to amend the agenda to add in a proclamation for Solarize Carrollton Day at the beginning, please. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the proclamation of Solarize Carrollton Day.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Rory, that's you.
All right. Can I ask anybody that is here in regards to the Solarize Carrollton Day, please stand First off, thank you all for coming today to be recognizing for the city to voice our support for such a wonderful contribution to not just the city, but to the county and to our region. This is not just an example of a group of people coming together for a good cause. I think what it is, is really coming together to reduce the price of solar within our community, bring it to an available cost by bringing multiple people together as an investment for their individual, for organizations like the corporations that are involved. I think we have Tanner, Southwire, Carroll AMC, to name a few, UWG as well. So I just want to say thank you to the organizers of it, John Hinman, major in getting the right people in the right room at the right time, and to the people, members of the steering committee that have helped push it in the right direction. I believe the RFP bid has, process has been completed, and a contractor has been selected, which is awesome, moving in the right direction with a launch day coming up on April 18. So I would like to proclaim April 18, 2018, as Solarize Carrollton Day. Whereas Solarize Carrollton is a community-based group organized by local citizens, and whereas this group is composed of local volunteers, leaders, nonprofit enterprises, and for-profit businesses, and whereas the mission of Solarize Carrollton is to promote the use of solar energy in homes, businesses, factories, and farms throughout the Carrollton Carroll County area. And whereas solar energy offers an inexhaustible source of clean renewable energy, and whereas solar energy is good for our community, serving to protect our air, water, and other natural resources, and whereas the city of Carrollton prides itself on being an altogether sustainable community. And whereas solar energy creates opportunities for economic development and job creation. Now therefore, I, Walt Almsworth, Mayor of the City of Carrollton, do hereby proclaim April 18, 2018, as Solarize Carrollton. Thank you again. Round of applause for everybody here. And if there are members of, if there are members of the steering committee that do want to come up, I'd like to hand this over, get a photo. And there is a solar panel over here in the side of the room. I know most people haven't seen one up close. It is kind of cool to see. But yeah, I'd like to do a photo as well.
Yes, the first item on your agenda is a rezoning application by James Tuggle, who is the co-owner of 1408 1414 Maple Street. The request is to rezone the property from RT, which is residential townhouse, to C3, which is neighborhood commercial. The Planning Commission reviewed this request in March, and they recommended approval by a vote of four to two. The specific request does not carry with it any specific development request. There was not a concept plan submitted. I think the property owners are literally just packaging it for resale. And I'm available if you have any questions.
What was discussed in planning and zoning for the four to two? Any comments from them?
They, well, there was obviously that question of what do you want to do with the property? And the applicants have been very straightforward that they don't necessarily have a development plan associated with the property. They feel like it might be better served as C3, and I think there was some hesitation with that, which was the split vote.
The Carrollton Corridor Committee is working on standards for overlay districts for their main corridors, Bankhead, Maple Street, Alabama Street. How far along are we, is the Corridor Committee on the Maple Street? Do we think that it would be able to get through by the, through planning and zoning into a council meeting by the June 4 council meeting? Is that a possibility? Is that a...
Well, that would require the Planning Commission to review it and make a recommendation in May, and that basically is going to be difficult for us to do because the Corridor Committee won't meet until, again, until the end of April. We could, we could probably do it. It may require some special call meetings, but we could probably do it.
I'd like to see that overlay in place before rezoning go through for it. Yeah, if we could have anybody speak on behalf of it or against it?
I believe the applicant is here.
Yeah, if anybody would like to speak for this zoning, please come forward.
Um, my, the alias I'm going by today is Jimmy Tuggle, not, not James Tuggle. Most of you know me as Jimmy rather than that. We, we've owned the property for several years. It had two residences on it that deteriorated to such the extent that we removed them from the property. It's on the edge of the, of the commercial part of Maple Street. It's in the middle of, of property that's used as housing for university students. You know, it's not, a C3 zoning is not inappropriate given the location of the property and the uses of the adjacent property. So we feel that, that it's a very appropriate use. Bread and breakfast, we have had discussions with religious organization to use it for their use such, similar to the Methodist Church three, four doors down. That has not come to fruition, but there was some serious discussion along those lines. Once again, we just feel that, that it's a very appropriate use for the property, you know, given the location across from the university and adjacent to all the other commercial property on Maple Street.
Been by that lot, or those two lots, I guess, a thousand times, but was there ever anything on it, or has it always been vacant?
Yeah, there were two houses on it.
Up until when?
Oh, I don't know. It's been, how long ago? Two houses. How long have the houses been gone? Long enough that we don't remember. Yeah, maybe 10 years. So nobody's really interested in using his RT, we can tell you that for a fact.
In the application, it's, you have to state if the future land use is going to be the new zoning? Is that a, is the future land use commercial for that piece of property?
It's, no, it's not, it's not designated in the land use plan, but it's not inappropriate for that use in that location.
Yeah, because there are a lot of other commercial properties just further down along there.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody who wants to speak against this rezoning? Seeing no one.
I'd like to make a motion to table this rezoning request until the June 4 council meeting.
Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of the table? All opposed? Motion carries to table. It's a June 4, is that what you're saying? It's a June 4. They will have a full slate then. All right, Mr. Tim, memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deco Star, which is one of the large industries in the area out in the industrial park, is planning a 101,000 square foot expansion at a cost of $12.9 million. They have applied to the Development Authority for tax abatement and bond financing, and you have an MOU before you to approve that abatement and, and bond financing. It is no, the bonding is no cost to the city. The, obviously, the tax abatement does cost the city the abhorrent tax, but a significant number of jobs will be added to the area and, again, the, the gain to the city and the area is certainly, is very positive. So we recommend that you approve that.
Any discussion?
How many jobs, and do we know the salary range for these jobs that are added to the community?
The salary range, I was quoted, and Chuck, I would ask you, you're their attorney, was in the $40,000 range was the average. Do you recall the number of jobs?
I think it's 41 is the full-time equivalents, that that's the community jobs goal in order to qualify for the, for the tax abatements. And that sounds right, Tim. That's my recollection on the discussion about the salary range.
How many do we know? Actual jobs?
Forty-one is, and these would be new jobs. They would be not jobs that are transferred from the existing facility or other locations within the county.
It is a typical MOU, which is school taxes still get paid and just abhorrent tax, equipment, whatnot, right?
That's right. There'll, there'll be a payment in lieu of taxes for the school taxes, but it'll be the same amount.
Any more questions? I'd like to make a motion. We approve memorandum of understanding for Deco Star Industries. Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion three and zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Tim, equipment bid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in the current budget is the purchase of two rear loader garbage trucks. As you gentlemen know, we rotate, we buy new trucks periodically, and we rotate these down the usage, the line of usage. The front-line trucks become recycle trucks, or recycle trucks become brush trucks, and then those, there, we even keep some in backup. It's a very busy department, and again, it's just time to replace two of those trucks. The city Public Works Department took bids from three different suppliers, Carolina Environmental out of Ostel, Georgia, Stringfellow Inc. out of Nashville, Tennessee, and McNeilus Truck and Manufacturing out of Villarica, Georgia. The low bid by far was Carolina Environmental, and again, don't let the word Carolina fool you, they were, that is an Ostel supplier. So in the amount of $333,866. So we recommend that you approve this purchase. Thank you.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of making this purchase, please raise your hand. Oh, motion in a second, excuse me.
I'll make a motion that we purchased, do a vehicle, two vehicle, two rear loader garbage truck purchases from Carolina Environmental Systems.
Motion in a second. Thank you, gentlemen, for keeping me straight tonight. It's been a long day. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Ms. Studdard, Board Department.
Emily Cole's term on the Board of Development Appeals, appeals expires in April this month. She's been a valuable asset to the board, and she's also agreed to serve another, another three-year term should you choose to reappoint her. We, like I said, we certainly have had, Emily has served her time as chair at certain points, but she's been on the board for quite a long time, and she's definitely a valuable asset to the Board of Development Appeals. At this time, staff is requesting that you reappoint her.
Any discussion? And get a motion to reappoint? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we go into an executive session. We need a motion to enter into executive session. A motion in a second. This time, we will move to an executive session and come back shortly. And a vote, excuse me. Having a hard night tonight, I'm sorry. We don't have to go upstairs.